As a colleague and our thoughts are with the entire Thorn family at this time. So if you have a moment, remember him in your thoughts. And if you see Barbara, give her a hug or a hello. So we will remember Mark fondly. With that, we'll move right into business. Is there any public comment this evening? Just your name and address for the record, Mrs. T A.
Stacy T A., 10 o'clock swing. I know Deb has that memorized. I just, there have been some discussions about the amount of classrooms for E L P. Currently, there are eight classes for E L P. I think it would be a mistake to cut any classes that are on the current Ed specs for E L P. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, we will move on to further discussion and possible action on the Oxford Elementary School educational specifications. Dr. Adley, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Janine, if you have anything to add.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you here and thank you for, tonight was for strategic planning. Thank you for the sort of staying with us and squeezing this agenda item in. Oxridge Building Committee just met last week, last Thursday, and they were reviewing the cost management items from the architect and the construction firm. And there was a variance, as you know, there's been a variance in the expenditures. And in order to try to mitigate those, they presented a number of site, program, and building adjustments. Specifically, they asked the Board of Education to look at the program adjustments and suggestions for modification. And most of these sort of pertain to either the elimination of something or the reduction of square footage. So with your indulgence, I'd like to sort of walk you through those items and have you to, your input and questions and so on to understand kind of where we are with it. So with that, I'll just sort of walk through the items, if that's okay?
Yep.
So the first program adjustment was to reduce kindergarten classrooms from 1,000 feet to 900 square feet. If you want me to give the recommendations as I go, I can do that, or we can talk about those afterwards. What would be your pleasure?
I think we, let's go through the, all the program adjustments and then we'll take the administrative recommendations one by one and discuss one by one.
Secondly, to reduce the classrooms in grades one to five, D L C rooms, general music room, world language room. And actually, there's one that's not listed there, the exploration room, which is in the library from 900 square feet to 800 square feet. Third one is to reduce the quantity of our D L C rooms from four to two. The next one is to reduce the quantity of E L P rooms, reduce them from 10 in the Ed specs right now to eight. Reduce the size of the O T P T room from 1,500 square feet to 1,000 square feet. Eliminate the raised platform in the gymnasium and provide an alternative to that, which likely will be risers with a ramp from furniture fixtures and equipment budget. Eliminate the skyfold partition in the gym. So that's sort of as a partition that provides two sections to the gymnasium. And then to eliminate the kiln and the kiln room and the art room. So those are the specifics. You can sort of see the reduction of square footage and what SLAM suggests as the savings. And I think I'll just go through the recommendations of the administration. The administration did meet on Friday. We, again, Oxridge met on Thursday. So we had representatives of special education for D L C, E L P. We had Luke, who's the principal, Michael, Director of Facilities, myself, and also the Director of Operations, Mr. Roodel. So we tried to review these and come up with our best recommendations. And these are the recommendations. One, if you're going to reduce the kindergarten classrooms, reduce the kindergarten classrooms to 900 square feet of floor space. So by my definition, that means do not include the bathrooms, do not include any cupboards or cubbies or anything else, but 900 square feet of complete floor space. So if you're thinking of your kitchen and, I don't count your counters and so on and so forth. So the actual space that the kids would have to move around on. For classrooms, basically all the classrooms would be to reduce the classroom to 800 square feet of floor space. So essentially, you're probably going up to about 850 gross, but basically 800 square feet of floor space. Reduce the quantity of D L C rooms from four to two. We recommend that we do not change this, even though D L C for Oxridge would, that the enrollment potentially would suggest that two classrooms would suffice. So if you end up taking the two classrooms, if you end up taking two of the four, they're going to take them ultimately out of either the pods for grade one, two, three, four, and five. I'm very concerned that that leaves you little, if any, flexibility in enrollment. When you look at enrollment numbers, we just had enrollment presented to us, but the enrollment numbers that went to the state for high-end bag a couple of years ago are the ones that we're essentially using. And they would suggest that in many, I'm not saying many years, but several years out, you could potentially have four class sections in each grade level. So that would, if you don't, if you eliminate that, you eliminate potentially one of those sections in each of the grade levels. And thus, you're going to lose your flexibility, any flexibility that you have. So that would be, I would suggest that that might be just a wee bit short-sighted. Reduce the E L P rooms from 10 to eight. Given the enrollments that we have seen in the past and talking to special services, I don't think, I think that's a reasonable request to reduce the number of rooms from 10 to eight. I think, I don't see any information to suggest that we are going to go over 120. Typically, we try and budget for 12 kids and 12 on the ideal and 15 on the upper end. So that's a point for discussion, but from four to two, reduce E L P rooms, oh, sorry, we just did that one. Reduce O T P T, we think from 15 to 1,000 is okay. When we look at some of the size of the rooms around the district, we felt that we could accommodate that. Eliminate the raised platform, we're okay with that also. Sometimes that tends not to be something that's particularly used that often. Tokenique might be an example of that. Eliminate the skyfold partition. I think there's an alternative that we could live with as opposed to this expensive drop-down. And eliminate the kiln, you can't eliminate the kiln because that's part of the art program and it's in all the other schools. So that's really a non-starter.
So can we just take a step back? So we are here because the building committee asked us to consider cost reductions because when they, when they were moving forward, when SLAM and their construction manager came back, the project was significantly over the $63 million that they had appropriated from the R T M. So they have a list of things that SLAM has recommended could be cost reduction. I think instead of value engineering, we're calling it value management now. But they're looking to get costs down. And the programmatic areas are what came back to us. Now, we are not in charge of financing. We are not in charge of how much things cost. What we are in charge of is creating the correct educational space and program space. The best way to do that is in conjunction with the administration. So what is coming back to us on their entire list of reductions are the program alterations for consideration. They cannot alter these specifications without our permission. And we can't build a school that is over budget. So this is where we are trying to work together to figure out the best way to move forward. So that's what's on the table tonight. This list is under our control and it's really up for discussion with the administration's recommendations considered. Mr. Janine?
I would just add to that that I don't want to constantly focus on the budget because at the end of the day, we want to build the right school for the students and have the right programming. And I think, and I think John Zagrotzky, Chairman of the Board of Finance and other folks on the committee have always said that. So part of what we discussed last week also was this is the normal process that you go through when you build something. You've got the design phase where we've designed everything that was on the Ed specs plus all the things that we thought would create the best educational experience for our students. So as you go through the process, this is a process of looking at what do we actually need, all right? In terms of size, are we overbuilding it? We've always, we also have to think about, when we go back to the state, what we're presenting to the state. And the state will look at it and understand that we want to build for expansion and growth. But they also have to look at overall costs in terms of reimbursement. They have to look at the size and they have to balance that schools being built have some equality throughout the states too, throughout the state. So that's always something that's taken into consideration.
Okay, so let's kind of take them, sorry.
And then just, just the other thing, just so the, you know, I think this is important when it comes to the classrooms. The original classrooms were built with the cubbies, with 26 cubbies inside the classroom, all right? So this was discussed a little bit the other day for some of the people that were at the meeting. So those cubbies now in the current schematic have them out in the hallway, creating space in the hallway for the cubbies. So that equates to rounding up about 60 square feet of classroom space that becomes freed up in terms of a reduction. So, you know, Kip and I were talking, is, you know, is the reduction just 60 square feet because we moved the cubbies out? Or are we rounding it up to 100? You know, that's all been part of the conversation.
Okay, so let's take them one by one because I think that's kind of the best way. I don't want to jumble all around this. And just remind, we are neither, we're not design or budget. What we are is program. So are there feelings on the suggestion to reduce the kindergarten classrooms from 1,000 to 900 square feet in grades one through five from 900 to 800 square feet?
Can I ask a qualifying question? Mr. Lind, can you remind us, on the tour of schools, you often, particularly when we're at homes, talk about the state standard for minimum square footage in the classroom. Can you remind everyone here what that is for elementary?
Minimum standard for elementary schools, kindergarten and pre-K, kindergarten's 900, pre-K is 1,000. When you look at what they give aid, they give, they use a formula of so many square feet per student and they aid you on that. They, when you get above first grade, they don't have a number, an exact number, but they have guidelines. And they say you want to be above 750 to 900 square feet.
Thank you.
So Katie, the other thing that I got from SLAM a short time ago too is the benchmark range is 45.7 net square feet per student. So if we didn't reduce the classrooms at all, we're at 50.8 net square foot per student.
And that's assuming how many students in a class?
Twenty-six.
Full, the full class.
There's a range that they give you.
I mean, the state sort of sets high, just for background, the state sort of sets high benchmarks. So for instance, for kindergarten, it can get up to 1,200 square feet. If you build a school at 1,200 square feet for those, you're going to, it's going to be way too big, right? Or you're not going to be able to fit that in square footage in. And they also give sort of like, when they do the square footage per student, they do it for the whole size of the building. How many students do you have for the size of the building? Which runs from about 100 square foot per student to 125 square foot per student.
How big are the, Mr. Lind, sorry, back to you. In Tokenique, which is our newest elementary school, how large are those classrooms, one through five, and ancillary rooms, music, world language, et cetera?
They're between 780 and 830 square feet. And the kindergarten, and that includes pre-K because those were regular classrooms. So pre-K is a little small by the standards. And kindergartens are 905 to 930, I think.
Thank you, I think that's helpful.
Any other questions on this one? Mrs. McCann?
Yeah, related to that, so if I take 900 and divide it by the number of students, that's the equation. So 900 divided by 26, which gives me 34.6.
So I, that's where, Duke, I was going to ask you, when SLAM is giving you that, that's actually not a state standard? That's what they've seen building or they're saying that's a standard, the 45.7 square feet?
There is the, there is not a Connecticut state standard for square footage per pupil. The department benchmark ranges.
So it's basically 100, it's not per pupil per classroom. It basically is per pupil per the, per the, per the number of students. So if it's, if it's, if it's 400 kids, it's 50,000 square feet. But then the problem is, you can't build this goal with the specs that the state gives you. So they put you in this conundrum and then architecture put in this scenario and board put in this scenario.
Mr. Seeny?
There was a memo that I believe Mr. Schreiner put out or an Excel spreadsheet that addressed some of this that we received, I guess, two weeks ago. I had the blue shading about, one of the issues that came up at the other meeting, and he, sorry, I'm all over the list. He outlines, you know, the space per pupil and the capacity. And I thought it was a good reference source, I don't know if everybody saw it. But also at the meeting on Thursday, the term double dip was used when discussing the lockers, if you will, or the cubbies within the building. And that they had designed the hallways to allow for cubbies as well as the classrooms to have cubbies. So I recall the word double dip. I just wanted to call that out, saying that the classrooms were built to have the cubbies within the, within the classrooms. Now, if you were to take them out, there's also room in the hallway, as per the building committee.
Mr. Brown?
And just following up on that, to be clear, Dr. Adley, you mentioned like the thing about your kitchen with the cabinets. I'm just trying to understand, did we have 900 square feet in total in the room, including cubbies? Or was it 900 feet to run around, or excuse me, 1,000?
What I'm looking for is a 900 square feet of actual floor, just not including that the.
And a kindergarten.
And what was the original spec for floor space?
It's 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so the cubbies, so we're going to reduce 100 of running around space? Or we're going to net reduce 40 of running around space with the cubby reduction?
So that's why I think what Duke is speaking to is that the room was designed at, let's take a kindergarten room, at 1,000 square feet.
Right.
That included cubbies, and that's what John's referencing with the double dip.
Right.
They're now considering moving cubbies out. And so they're saying that's a reasonable reduction of at least 60 feet.
So that would save 60, so we're about 940. And we're looking to go to 900, so it's 40 square feet we're looking to reduce of the.
Yeah, that's a way to look at it.
It's one way to look at it, yes.
Thank you.
So my only thing that I want to make sure, and I've said this so in some ways, I apologize for asking, but I think the public needs to hear it, that the state, the state standard is 26 students. Darian's standard is lower than that. However, what I would not want to do is tie any future board, should there need to be a budget consideration. Are we building classrooms such that if we ever needed to, we could go up to 26 square feet? If there was a real need for either a large enrollment increase we didn't expect or a real budget crunch, could we in these classrooms hold the maximum number of students within the class?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think these guys know.
I would not be locking any, but just as a matter of practice in general, I wouldn't lock any board into future class sizes and so on and so forth. I think the idea that the board has strong guidelines and has ideals as strongly, this is what we recommend. Administratively, we would actually support that obviously and the implementation of that. But where there are exceptions, I would never rule out that. I think you're handcuffing yourself too much. I don't think it's necessary, but the bottom line is, you could, you could put more students in there. Even like, an example might be science classrooms. Like science classrooms at the high school technically are 24 and for middle school, 24. When you go over it, it's not as if you can't go over it, but you get pushback, right? From standards and safety and that type of stuff. That's for science labs, all right, not kindergarten classrooms. But if you had a student or two, you could certainly put the students in there. I don't feel that's a compromise at all.
I'm sorry, Dennis?
Do we have any concerns about putting cubbies in the hallway? Of having, you know, 100 five-year-olds spilling out, trying to put their boots and coats on all at once? Or is that just something the administration thinks they can handle in a wave? Or just what is the safety concern of having and the concern or any?
So there's, so the design, right, the design committee has been looking at the layout of, you know, everything from cabinets to cubbies. And this is something that, he's sitting here, so I have to say that his staff and Luke support that design in terms of creating another wee opportunity for, oh, it's contemporized a little bit. It's another, creates another wee space out there and also creates a bigger space inside.
Any other thoughts on this modification? Okay, so let's move on to reducing the quantity of the D L C rooms from four into two. There's a recommendation for no changes at this time. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this one? Mrs. McCann?
Shirley, can you comment on what you're seeing happening with enrollment in the type of student that this program is meant to serve?
Certainly, for the D L C program. And I had mentioned it the other night, we're, our current program at Henley has 13 students who are enrolled in the D L C program. So we've seen a trend over the last five years. Actually, the numbers have actually gone from single digits. I think I had, it went from like one to three to seven to nine, this year at 13. That was our largest growing program. Those are our younger students. And our program that is housed at Oxridge are grades three, four, or five. We currently have six students and that's ranged from seven, eight students a year, depending on our kids and as they're articulating from grades. We know that there is a cohort of students coming up next year from E L P as well. So we're looking at that for, and we might have to shift some of our early program over at Henley, over to Oxridge, depending on the number of students. So we want to make sure we have a balance there as well.
Any other questions on D L C?
Do we have any idea of the size of the E L P cohort? Pos or minus?
Can you ask that question again?
The folks coming up from E L P, is that three or is that?
They would be kindergarten age. Oh, the number of students would be kindergarten entrance.
How many-ish kids? How big is that cohort? Is that under five, is that?
Under five.
Okay, yes. Mr. Seeny?
Just, Duke, can you remind us why this item, why the recommendation was four to two? I can't.
The original Ed spec was two.
Okay.
As we went through the process, we increased it to four based on feedback from the special Ed team.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important to note that part of that whole conversation with the design team included the idea of flexibility. D L C was seeing a rise. We were also, if D L C didn't, if I remember the design conversations correctly, where was that even if it didn't rise to the level, we would see, it would provide us with an extra first grade class or second grade classroom, should we need to. So I think that's important. The other thing that I don't think we discussed, although I would maybe ask the administration to look at going forward, is if we're talking about moving cordables out, we need to free up space in Henley. This provides opportunity to do that. Any other comments or questions on this one at the moment?
Just, just a little more detail, it's more designed. But all these conversations at those meetings center around the placement of these classrooms and the fact that, you know, if more classrooms are needed, we're building flexibility. So if there aren't four first grade classrooms, you know, there's a classroom there if a D L C classroom is needed or an E L P classroom. So I think that's always been part of the conversation, is the flexibility around all these spaces and classrooms, specific in that wing where E L P, kindergarten and first grade and the D L C classrooms would be.
And the original enrollments that were given for the building of the project, if you look out to 2026 and 2027, you might actually want to have four sections.
Okay, let's move on to reduce quantity of E L Ps from 10 into eight. Comments, and I know there's some, Mrs. McCann?
Can we start where we just were with flexibility and really talk to that in detail? Because I think, I think that point is important. I think we are, my guess is that, given that although we're seeing Darian still being popular, we are seeing an overall birth rate being down. So I think, you know, but we have some changes in housing stock coming, it's hard to roll the dice. But my suspicion would be that we'll see some jaggedness, you know, kind of in pocket by pocket. So maybe we have two first grade sections, but we need four D L C classrooms. But we need four fourth grade classrooms and we need, you know, eight E L P classrooms. Can you talk about how as an administrative team, you're thinking overall about this building? Because it.
So in making that recommendation, we are looking at providing the district a little bit of flexibility. If you wait long enough, things keep happening again. And I would hate to be down the line a little bit and just be stuck or even have to. The design of the building is such that they can add on, I think, that's a direction of, but ideally, you don't want to do that. So if you look again at the enrollment that was submitted to the state to build this building, it suggests down the road that you're going, you could possibly have four sections in each of those areas. If that's the case, you can't have an extra D L C. You can't have extra D L C rooms in there. So I would plan to have four sections, which means you have two D L C rooms. Because if they take two away, right, they're not taking the, what they're going to do is take two, there's one on, let's say, one floor and have a pod, and there's one on the bottom floor. And then there's two in other places.
Right.
Right, so they're going to take these two away probably, right, that are here. Well, if you get four and four, you have nowhere to go with D L C.
So I think that's going to then beg the question on your E L P recommendation.
Sorry, D L C, I was talking.
Yeah, I know, but so now, I can see Jill's question.
So, okay, well, the question for that is, the E L P historically is starting at 15, 16, 93 students, going to 89, 77, 88, 83. Now, at the end of the year, maybe we've spiked along the way. But I just don't see, I mean, the original projections that were put in, 150 was put in. But really, I mean, I would beg, where did it come from? I understand it was, it was trying to create a wee bit of space and so on and so forth, flexibility. But I just don't see that necessarily playing out. And you could actually grow to about 120 and still accommodate comfortably.
Okay, so do we have June enrollment numbers for the last five or 10 years?
Yes, I can actually have enrollment numbers if you'd like to.
For E L P?
Yeah, I could. The enrollment numbers for 15, 16 is 93, 16, 7, I can actually, I've got a sheet for you to pass out.
That's June, yeah.
I can pass it.
I didn't know if you said October or June, I have, okay.
So, I'm going to wait, Mr. Seeny?
Basically, what I'm hearing is if you consider these two types of classrooms together, you want some flexibility. But what has been designed in, in the administration's view is a little too much flexibility. And therefore, you can recommend a cut of the E L P down from 10 to eight, but not from four to two on the D L C rooms. Is that a good summary of?
That would be correct. I'm trying to be, we are trying to be reasonable and also plan accordingly, right? But yes, what you said is correct. What you said is correct.
Mrs. McCann?
Shirley, can you talk about building an E L P or a D L C classroom? Because I think that we can talk about class size and optimizing it, but you may have years where 12 is even potentially a lot in a classroom because of the number of adults and maybe other equipment you have to have in the room.
So if I can go back to the original assumption, I think, we're getting feedback. I think, if it's on, is it on?
I think it's good now.
You know, the notion of having 10 classrooms with up to 15 students classroom, I think is that's where the original 150 students came from.
Yes.
When we looked at the last five years of enrollment and somewhere, is the feedback terrible?
No, you're fine.
And looking at the enrollment, somewhere around 93, 96 students, looking at that. With eight classrooms, we still could keep a proper enrollment number when you would look at that because you would want your numbers to look more like 12 or 13 students of the engagement. I think the design was, we could manage with eight classrooms. And I think in response to what we'd like, we thought if we could have 10 classrooms ideally, the notion of growing to that, but looking at the numbers, it looks like we certainly could manage with eight classrooms based on the enrollments. And haven't seen a trend that go beyond that. When you look at projections of enrollment in within general education also, it seems consistent. I think the D L C, the reason we can't reduce from four to two, or looking at that, is you really may only have two opportunities for D L C classes based on those four classrooms. Because if the other two flexible spaced D L C classrooms needed to be used for a first grade section or a fourth grade section, you really only have two D L C opportunities. So I think that's why there's, there's less movement in that or less opportunity, we know, based We know, based on our trends, we would need a minimum of two DLC classrooms. So does that help?
It's a start. So how many kids are you putting in a DLC classroom-ish?
It depends on, again, it depends on the number of students we have. It can be as many, you know, look, right now, we've got, in Henley, we have thirteen kids between those three rooms that we've put together. But depends on age of the students, needs of the students, so it varies. One of our classrooms has less students at Oxbridge right now, for mobility reasons and different, you know, structures we need within the classroom. So it depends on the cohort of students and their needs.
So, so building from that, that it really depends on the cohort, which ELP is pretty sensitive to as well, what's your optimal range of, of kids per class?
We'd like to stay twelve, thirteen students.
Twelve, thirteen? Okay.
But I, am I understanding correctly that it, that's much like our guidelines, we have optimal in our guidelines, and then we have what we will do should we need to.
Right, fifteen would be proper. Fifteen would be proper.
Okay.
Be proud of it.
What did you say there? Did you clarify what you said?
Fifteen would be proper.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think you had a problem.
I heard proper. I think they heard problem.
Twelve, thirteen, more comfortable, fifteen, proper. The other variable just on DLC, which is different on the cohort, just to answer your question, Jill, is we try to do grades three, four, five, K one, two. So depending on the age of the student also, you know, our students already are in that age cohort in ELP.
Right.
So it's designed that way versus our design when we work with the grade age students.
Right. So programmatically, because again, I think that's what we have to look at, are you saying that from student services and from the administration's standpoint, you are comfortable running this program into the future with eight classrooms?
Based on her historical enrollments, yes.
That would be an affirmative, yes.
Well, I mean, I feel like, because what we, our concern, for those of us, I'm sure, have sat on this board before, is we started ELP in Henley, and then we ran out of space, and so we went to Tokenique, and then we ran out of space, and so we went to Royal. And so I think what we're looking is to be able to give the building committee sufficient information so that we're not in that situation again.
It's not just running out of space. You know, closets were turned into offices. I mean, the concept of flexible space, I think everyone is hearing the board loud and clear, it's important. So as long as you're saying that those two sort of floating DLC classrooms can provide for that, and maybe we label them something different, maybe two DLC and two DLC slash ELP. I, I don't know to give, you know, you can see the faces in the audience. People are concerned. The board is concerned about value engineering, or whatever our new word is, because-
It's not my word, don't give me that.
No, I know, because of Tokenique and the high school, which are the new buildings we've all lived through on this board, we have not had the space we've needed due to value engineering, so I think we're all really afraid of it. So if you're saying you're okay, I trust that, but understand, for those of us who live through Tokenique, there is some fear of it.
Mrs. Ritchie? I'm sorry, may I, just add one thing, Katie. The difference, I think, also in the notion of one community, you know, one program, was the idea that the other spaces are available as well. And I think that's the difference. Laura's prepared proper spaces for SLPs, for psychologists, for the OT room, for the PT room, for a multipurpose room. I think the other areas really have a different design, and that wasn't available in some of the existing buildings, so that supports it. And again, I think a class is based on enrollment is adequate to support our program, not looking at any unusual trend that would happen, so I hear what Dr. Adley's saying. I can say with confidence, there's, there's no evidence to show that the enrollment would increase based on the last five-year trends. Yeah, looking at the number of classes we have.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Um, I, I appreciate your, your input and perspective, and I'm glad you feel that taking those two rooms out would be okay. But I'm struggling just because with Tokenique, we very quickly ran out of space. And I, even with your assurances, I don't think I can support the reduction because I don't want to value engineer two classrooms out and then come five years from now, we realize we need the space.
Mr. Brown?
So I just kind of want to ask a little differently. There was a decision, I guess, to cite everything at Oxridge prior to getting on before my time. Is that in necessity, something that we have to do for the program? Or if we had, perhaps, we go down to eight classrooms, we find ourselves with a hundred and fifty enrollees in the future, would we be able to have sites at other schools, or would that ruin the purpose of what we're trying to do and make the program less effective?
So both things are true. Yes, yes. It would take away the perspective of what we're doing, which really improves support services to students by shared clinicians, by shared related service providers, and by one location to really enact, interact with all the classrooms. So it would compromise the, the integrity of the program. That said, the way we do currently is, we do have different programs in different schools if we were faced with that.
So I would put it a, a little bit differently, but from a board perspective, one of the goals we gave was one site, one school. And, and that was both because we heard educationally that was correct, and also as a board, we looked budgetarily, there were significant, we were, we were made to believe there were significant savings with clinicians rather than travel time. So I would say we could do it if we needed to in a pinch, but I think that's what you're hearing from Mrs. McCammon and Mrs. Stein, the concern that like, we've done what we needed to in a pinch for a long time, we're trying to build the right space now. Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, just for clarification for me, what I recall when we built these ed specs was that we designed some kindergarten rooms to be flexible enough, for some first grade rooms to be flexible to use as kindergarten, because we don't know if they're, because there are different cubbies and different sizes for those. With ELP, that's a different wing, so we can't, can't borrow those classrooms and then put them in somewhere, well, I don't know if it's in a different wing or not. That's still design plan.
With design.
But it's plan, I mean, I think the, the idea is to put it in a different wing, so we can't borrow those classrooms. So I'm kind of with Mrs. Ritchie, is that I feel we're, we're in danger of boxing ourselves in, that we can't borrow those classrooms and, and have the flexible space from other areas. And just to be clear, in, in the reduction of the, reduction of the classroom size, are we then in danger of not being able to use a first grade classroom for a kindergarten classroom? Or can we, can we reduce three of the four and save one to be a flexible space?
Fair question. I had the same thought. Other questions?
I just, I would say to your point, from a concept standpoint, the design that is, where the design is headed is for just that, that if we built eight ELP classrooms and needed an additional one, it's within a wing on a ground floor, that you could easily take your classroom and add it to ELP. It might be around the bed, but be the first classroom there, so it might not be in the pod of eight classrooms. It's not like it's a locked off way.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have the, I think, we, we just really need to, I think our point is, I think we're all arguing the same, arguing, but discussing the same point, is we just don't want to have an obsolete school in five years. And I think we, we need to discuss budgetarily of the, you know, I think our, our process is still a flawed process where we, we get an estimate of putting a budget together, and we're held to a budget, and then we design a school, and then it's like, well, you asked for this much money, but it's cost this, it costs X, it costs Y, not X.
So I would say, yeah, I would, I would say, one, it's, it's the state's process for the application. Two, I think, I have not heard anyone to reiterate Duke's point, that if we feel educationally that we need more money, that they're not willing to make that argument on our behalf. I think what they're asking us to consider, and what I hear us balancing is flexible space and building too big. And what's the difference between those two things? Because that, I think that's what we're trying to mete out now. Mr. Brown?
I was just gonna follow up with a point that as we go through this decision, we're using the best metrics we have. I mean, that's why we had a request for a little more data, anything we can do to drill down. I think the projections we heard last week, and what we've heard from McBroom, the biggest wild card is what happens to in migration. If all of a sudden, Darien becomes a very popular spot, you know, all, you know, five years from now, people could look back and say, how did they underplan this? So, you know, any information, we can have to inform that decision, but I, I think, you know, this has all been measured out, this has all been studied. We've gotten available information. We planned this as best as we can at this point. So anything we can get additional to help us, obviously would be beneficial, but that's, that's my big concern, is we have in our data, you asked Dr. Adley, what, what's the point of my asking? I think the question was, I think the biggest unknown we might possibly have is inward migration, which we obviously can't know. So I think we need to be conscious and that recognize in our process that, you know, there is a wild card here that we can't really plan for, but we are looking at everything we possibly can. I think we're all going into this knowing that there is a possible, possible variance there.
So my question goes to, we're currently running eight, eight classrooms now. They're all, I believe, under twelve.
At this time, yes.
At this time. And so I think part of our planning is that what really optimally are we running classes as? Are we running classes of six, looking to grow to twelve? I see here that our optimal is twelve. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. So the math, the math kind of tells the story there. What would the administration do if they're-
So twelve, you have ninety-six students. At, at twelve classrooms, you, of eight classrooms, you'd have ten students, you'd have ninety-six students. And if you had ten classrooms, you'd be able to have a hundred and twenty students.
But ten, ten's a small class to be running, based on what you're telling us here.
And what would the administration do?
What would be, what I'd like to know is if, since we need to have a one-to-one ratio when we service kids, if we had a high enrollment of kids with needs, what would we do? And what I'm hearing is you would go up to fifteen students first, and, you know, eight times fifteen, that would be our maximum. And is the board comfortable with that? That's really what we're deciding right now. So, because, because to Mr. Brown's point, you're never gonna know your inward, inward, sorry, inward migration. So the answer is, the administration, are you comfortable that if you went over a max, you would run classes at fifteen? And that you have enough swing space in the school to deal with increased enrollment at every level? Because the board can't know that, right? Could you manage that scenario?
So I would just say that the, what we're recommending is between what we heard from McBroom in terms of enrollment versus what the high enrollment is that was originally submitted. So it gives us flexibility in the DLC, with the scheduling of the ELP. Honestly, we, we, I think you find it surprising, and I said, well, I don't think we have the flexibility. Certainly, you could convince me, and convince the other members of the administration, but honestly, we're bringing forward what we think can work. I'm with your qualification. I still, I still think that it works for you, or for us.
But I would, I would, I would couch that as, you don't want it to just work for you, or you don't want to make it work, because we just have too much history of it not working. So we're talking about two classrooms here in the whole scheme of things. There is, you know, there's various design stages of where you could add, add classrooms, but we can't five years from now, or even eight years from now, be sitting here and saying we need to add two classrooms to this building. So I think that's, that's-
That's, that's fair. I think that-
The problem is, you know, the ongoing challenge is when we finalize this, is, you know, if you looked at what today, there's sixty-eight kids in ELP. So if you go to the state today and say you want to build these ten classrooms, knowing that that trend is, come the new year and into the spring, it could be easily up to ninety or a hundred, but if you look at it at a certain point in time, some of this looks like we're overbuilding. We're not even building for expansion. We're just overbuilding to begin with. So that's kind of the balance.
Just for the record, when I say it works, I mean, it works well. Just for, just for the record.
So we'd be building for one fifty, and we've never seen, have we, we've never seen numbers close to one fifty?
No, we haven't.
Mrs. McCammon?
I think technically, we'd really be building for one twenty. We have capacity up to one fifty, but we don't run at the state for the other school, you know, the other sizes. So I think we need to decide what our classroom capacity is, and we need to build to that.
I know, what I'm hearing from Mrs. Klein is our classroom capacity is twelve to fifteen.
Yes.
That, that's why I was making that point earlier. Currently, we're running lower, so is twelve to fifteen, are? Mrs. Ritchie?
So I guess my point is, we would be building to have the capacity that we have today if we do eight ELP rooms. And I'm not comfortable boxing you into the possibility of having to put fifteen kids in every one of those classrooms. I'm just not comfortable with that.
Why?
Well, can we get?
I just want to know why relative to staff.
Because I don't think it's optimal, because we don't know what type of students are going to be in those classrooms.
Mrs. McCammon?
Can we get Shirley to talk to that? What's the difference between, you know, a classroom sort of staffed optimally and a classroom that's a little, or, excuse me?
We haven't really run classes at fifteen students.
Yes, yeah.
You know, we've run classes at twelve students. And when, you know, optimal is, is one way of looking at it, but it really is the design, remember, it's a one-for-one. So we've got, you know, students who have IEPs and typically develop students. I think, and if you look at the trends of when kids turn three years old, and we look at it over the course of a year, to answer John's question, twelve is a better number to run a class in for many reasons. And that's, we haven't really run at fifteen, so it's hard to speak to the fifteen. That said, looking at our enrollment trends, if we need to work at fifteen, we'll work at fifteen.
So, just one clarification, have we ever gone over one twenty?
Not by the numbers I'm looking at.
Not, I, I don't know, not in the last five years.
Our projections don't say we're going over one twenty. Is that correct?
In the last five years, we have not.
And looking at our projections, don't say beyond one twenty, correct?
Correct.
To that point, maybe a better visual for me there too, so you're, you're talking twelve is optimal, that's students in a classroom. Then how many additional people are in that classroom? Are there twelve additional people in that classroom? So we're talking about twenty-four people in a classroom?
I mean, additionally in terms of staff?
Yes.
So you, you'll have one special education teacher, you may have two paraprofessionals, you might have a speech therapist who's pushing in, you might have an OT who's pushing in, you might have a PT who's pushing in, depending on student services.
But at any point in time, how many additional?
Adults would you have? It can vary, but you would at least at a minimum have two or three adults. You have two or three.
Mrs. Ritchie?
What about going down to nine? So I mean, does it have to be eight or ten? Why can't it be nine?
Um, it can be. I think we need the theory. The theory seems to be a fear of what's happened in the past versus people looking at numbers. And, and I think that we need to, to, we need to settle those two out. It is true that we had, the schools that have been built, we have filled up quickly. It is also true that our projection numbers don't show out. It is similarly true, what Mr. Zagrotzky said in the Board of Finance, we have a history of our numbers always being over our projections in general. Darien just continues to be an education destination. So it is, it is a hard decision in front of this board, it is a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar decision in front of this board. We haven't seen one fifty. Is one fifty a number that's replicated in any other district around us? Or is that more of a universal pre-K number?
I'd have to look into that and check those numbers. I don't want to guess.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine.
But I certainly can look at those easily.
Yep. Mrs. McCammon?
I think the one fifty came from assuming that you were topping out at fifteen and we needed ten classrooms. I think, I think it's a fairly arbitrary number, we should let that go. I think we need to decide what we're planning for. Are we planning for ninety, a hundred, or a hundred and twenty students? And then back into a classroom number. I think the one fifty is wrong.
So this, this is where I'm getting a little bit of mixed messages from the administration. So I'm hearing fifteen is optimal, which is how we got the one, I mean, fifteen is possible.
Yes.
Which is how we got the number of one fifty.
That's how we got one.
And if fifteen is possible, what you're telling a board that at some point, when it is creating a budget, it can put fifteen kids in that classroom. If what you're telling me is you have no intention of ever putting fifteen kids in that classroom, that changes our decision.
I'm not telling you that.
So you were telling me that at some point, you would put fifteen kids in the ELP classroom?
Yes.
So, so then we, that's where the one fifty is coming from. So-
So you're, you're putting fifteen in a classroom because you have to, or because you think it's ideal educationally?
So I believe twelve to fifteen, based on my past practice of, of working with preschool children, right, is a good, at some point, you have to budget somewhere, right, per student, right? So I think that that is a good educational model. Ideally, I'm gonna budget, what we're saying is we're budgeting for twelve, we would accommodate fifteen if that, if that were the case.
So I think that's what we do with all our classes, right? No one really wants to run some of our classes in there at twenty-four, but we do know we run into situations where we have to run at twenty-four because we only have so much staff and so much space. So we're in the same position with ELP. There is nothing saying we need to go from ten to eight to nine, to, we set the number.
But I'm happy enough for the board to go for nine, that's okay, that's good for me.
Alan, would you repeat the last five years, or whatever you have there, of actual enrollment from June?
For, for ELP? I, I don't think these are actually, at the June, yeah, so nine, if it's ninety-three, eighty-nine, seventy-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-three. But I do think that there's one, there was one occasion where you did hit the hundred mark, right?
Last year, we hit the hundred mark, just over. But we still didn't hit one twenty.
I think we hit a hundred and two.
Hundred and two?
That's right, I think.
Do we know what the program high is? Is that the program? Do we know what the program high is? Is that the program high?
So, if you were to look at one oh two, you're still talking about the one twenty being able to run. I mean, you've still got eighteen more kids you could absorb. Nine of those need to be identified children with needs. Nine would have to be children who, at some point, even later in the spring, would be willing to leave whatever program they're in and to enter ELP.
Correct.
Because they don't all start. I mean, you can front-load, but you might not front-load. We're going to think we're going to move forward. I have a feeling we're coming back to this one, but I want to be cognizant of time. Reduce classroom size of OTPT room for fifteen students from fifteen hundred to a thousand. The administration's recommendation is yes. Are there any questions on this topic?
Do we have comparables for the other schools?
Mr. Lynch will share with you.
Ox Ridge, the current Ox Ridge building has the largest OTPT room right now. It's called the Mini Gym. And it's about nine hundred square feet. And the other schools range from three hundred and fifty to five hundred, five hundred and twenty square feet for the OTPT. So, that's our biggest.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Eliminate the raised platform in the gym. The administration says that's fine with them. Any questions on that?
Is that something that could be added later?
Probably not a good idea to add later.
Just wondering if it could be modularized later.
So, this is a stage, right? We're talking about a stage?
Yeah, we have a platform.
Um, no other questions. Eliminate the skyfold partition in the gym. It's a hundred. Any questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
Could you just describe what that alternative is, a curtain? So, is it giving less privacy between the two spaces with a curtain? And is that functionally fine for whatever the use of the curtain would be?
The curtains tend to divide, clearly divide the gymnasium, but if you, they're fair, they're fairly light, too, in terms of, at least the ones I've got in my head. I don't know if Mike has got a different one. But they're fairly light in that capacity. It just makes a separation. The noise are going to be, you're not, like, you're not going to have a band concert or something else over here. Like, that's not going to happen. It ju, it, it just serves simply to give a bit of privacy so that two events can run simultaneously. But for the most part, they may be two noisy events, or you just can't have, you know, musical performances or other things happen simultaneously.
Mr. Brown?
Same question as Mr. C. Can we add in the skyfall partition, or sky later on, if we have the curtains? Or do we lose that optionality?
Mr. Deneen?
Oh, sorry. So, just go ahead.
You could, it, it's, you would have to have it as an add alternate and, and make sure you do the structural framing when you build the building, because you wouldn't really be able to add that in later.
You could ask maybe the building committee to consider as an alternate.
That's all, that will all be, items like this and John's item will all be part of an add alternate list at the end of the day.
That's useful. Thank you. Eliminate the kiln and the kiln room, the administration recommends. No, is there any?
No.
Okay. Yeah, ten thousand dollars, we can figure that one out. All right, so, I am, is there, it seems to be ELP where there's a sticking point. Is there any recommendation from anyone on, on this? Because ideally, unless there's significantly more information, I think the building committee is looking for action from us to move forward on Thursday. I was just made aware they have a design meeting tomorrow, and, and they'd like some of this, but I, I don't feel the need to rush us if we're unsure.
So, are they looking for us to approve the new ed specs?
We're looking for direct, we're looking for direction so that they can start.
Wouldn't that mean we have to approve and change the...
We, we would need to approve changes in ed specs.
And we're going to do that tonight?
If the board is comfortable. If the board is not comfortable, then we can't.
Why don't we take off the items we're comfortable with and see where we're at?
Okay. The first item, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
I will note, I am comfortable with the idea of it being floor space. And I want actual usable floor space, as written. Anyone, everyone comfortable with that? Mr. Maroni?
My point, though, is I think we need to save one kindergarten classroom that can be, or, not a kindergarten, I think, never mind. It'll be my next point, first grade, first grade point. We need to save a classroom.
One first-grade classroom at nine hundred square feet, you'd say, so it could be used as a kindergarten room. I think what Mr. Maroni is talking about is if you need the flexibility, you will end up with a downsized kindergarten class because it will be taken from a one-through-five class. Unless, of course, you take an ELP classroom that will be at nine hundred square feet. All right, we'll come right back to it. Reduce quantity of DLC rooms. We're saying no to that. Four to two. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Reduce the size of OTPT. We're saying yes from fifteen hundred to a thousand. Everyone okay with that one? Eliminate the raised platform, but request that it make sure that is added as an add alternate.
Yeah, is that, what is that for? Is that for, so they can do a band concert?
Yeah, it's, it's a stage.
So, so what, what would happen without a platform?
Risers, risers.
Risers.
Oh, that you would just temporarily put up and down?
Most schools don't have a, a stage or a platform.
So, this is comparable to what Tokenik has, as, as written?
Um, eliminate skyfold partition in gym, but request that it be added as an add alternate?
Yeah.
And eliminate kiln room. We are rejecting that.
Correct.
Correct. So, it looks like we have the square footage and ELP on the present.
Can I ask one question? Sorry.
Yep.
On the risers stage, how much do risers cost if you were to do the right amount of risers for a performance? Because this is only twenty-six thousand dollars. How much do risers cost?
I'm not sure. It's like something that I don't really ever buy.
I'm inclined not to go forward with not having a stage. I think Tokenik has a stage. I would think most new schools would have the capacity to have a stage for a holiday concert performance. Personally, twenty-six thousand dollars, to me, it's not worth getting rid of a stage.
I will tell you to that point, too. I think the lesson learned from Tokenik is, this is one room with the stage at the end, where in Tokenik, it's in the middle, so those two rooms become not usable as one.
Right.
This, we're designing as a room to potentially seat the capacity of the school in for a particular event or meeting.
For the money, I would, I would support it.
It's not a lot of money, even risers are going to cost...
I don't feel, yeah, I think...
It's not worth it.
What you, risers are great for standing, if the kids want to do anything other than stand. Um, but, let's go back to the, the two main ones, square footage in classrooms.
Again, they, the building committee was clear that there's a double-dip opportunity here. Am I correct? Okay, so, I think it's been well thought out. This is a great place where we can cut some, some square footage and some cost out. Not that we're looking at the cost, but it's a reality that's out there.
Okay, and Mr. Maroni's concern of one classroom being left at nine hundred square feet, how's the administration feel about that? Or are you comfortable with your recommendation as a?
Honestly, I think I'm comfortable with the recommendation. I understand and respect Dennis's position on it. I also don't want to set up different classrooms equity size to start with, if I, if I can help it.
And you could run a kindergarten classroom at eight hundred square feet, should you be pushed into that position?
Yes, I could, yes.
Um, red, ever, anyone other questions on that one? Okay, uh, let's go back to ELP. So...
If we don't make a recommendation tonight, it goes back to the building committee saying, yeah, we struggle with these two items. What's, what's the ramifications of that, do? I said the next meetings in January, they would proceed with the schematic design based on what we decided on.
We would, it would, whatever remains in our ed spec they would need to build to, so it would be ten classrooms to be okay. They can't modify one way or the other.
And what we're trying to do also, John, is set up the next meeting with the state. So, that's why we wanted some guidance and some schematics to be to the point where the state doesn't want us to come back and come back and come back. So, you guys want us to find a final answer tonight, basically? If possible, yes. All right, so let's, let's do it.
So, that's, that's what I think board members need to weigh. There, there's a numbers mathematics game, and there is a concern of mistakes of lessons learned. So, I have the administration recommendation of moving down to eight. Is there anyone who wants to alter that recommendation? Mr. Maroni, how do you feel about that recommendation?
I am very reluctant to support that recommendation.
Mr. Deneen?
I'm okay with it.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I am reluctant to support it.
Mr. Brown?
I'm okay with it.
Mrs. McCammon?
Um, I actually think it's not so much a fear game. I think it's a numbers game. I think I want to be sure we're clear on the numbers, because I think twelve students at eight classrooms is ninety-six. And so, if it's, you know, twelve students times, what's, what's the enrollment number we're trying to hit? That, you're saying the high is, is one oh two, wait, about? Is that our historical high?
I think you may have also had one-ten at one point.
Yeah.
Yeah, one-ten's in our projections, so...
Yeah, I think there's a one-ten.
You know, I know, Malone and Maitre did not actually look at...
No, no.
No, they didn't.
Pre-K, so, we just what, have a persistence model that's, that's got, got us to one-ten? So, that's what we have.
One-ten is actually the model based on the, on the CDEC number, I believe. It's fifty-five students, so if you double that, you're just doing to a one-ten.
Yeah, okay. So, I, I think we need to build for one-ten, then, I would say. You know, I think that's our best number we have.
Mrs. Stein?
I'm reluctant.
Mr. Ceni?
I'm good.
All right, so, if we take our highest enrollment number of one-ten, what eight classrooms does? This is really, again, we go to administration, again, what I'm hearing is, are we at twelve, or are we at fifteen? And I'm hearing the administration recommend they'll go up to fifteen.
I'm sorry, but I've heard two different answers to that question. I've heard, we've never gone above twelve, and we, we can go to fifteen. So, I am honestly confused.
I don't have the answer. Mrs. Klein and Dr. Adley, would you like to?
We haven't had the enrollment that warranted us going to one, to fifteen. So, we haven't had that enrollment.
Or the space constraint.
Right, or the space constraint. Yeah, or the space constraints, yes.
And if we went to fifteen, I would be comfortable with fifteen, up to fifteen.
So, I, I think that's part of the wrestle I'm also hearing, because we've never gone up, people say we're not, but we haven't had to. Um, and we haven't had the enrollment that's demanded it. So, does that twelve to fifteen provide the necessary growth, Mrs. McCammon, that, that you're referencing, that, that could happen, right? And is the hesitation from the board members who are reluctant to support it, that they're unsure about the fifteen? Is, is that the reluctance? You're unsure about running classes at fifteen?
I've seen some classes at fourteen back in the day. They were big. They were difficult to manage.
So, I didn't throw my hat in the ring. And I will say that I don't design classrooms or run classroom spaces. So, I hear the concern. I imagine being a teacher in that classroom of fifteen would be very busy, but I have to go with the people designing the classes. If you're telling me educationally is appropriate to run a class at fifteen, I think that's as powerful as we have a class size of twenty-six, or twenty-four, and that's crazy for a current teacher at times, but sometimes we have to go there. Mr. Maroni?
I think the other question that I don't know the answer to is, what are our current ELP classroom sizes? So, I think part of that is our number that we're working towards. So, if we're saying, if our, our current classroom sizes are how big now? What is our, what is our proposed ELP classroom?
You mean square footage?
A thousand square feet? And our current ones are how big?
Mr. Lynch, do you know the ELP classroom sizes?
The two at Ox Ridge are about nine hundred. The two at Tokenik are seven ninety to eight twenty. And the ones at Royal are in the mid-to-high seven hundreds.
So, I don't, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples if we're talking about putting fourteen kids in a room and it's tight at seven ninety, and we're also, we're talking about adding to a thousand. Maybe we can do the fifteen. So, I think we need to, we're not, I'm having a difficult time with this again.
And ELP classrooms in the new ed specs are at a thousand feet. Square feet, sorry. All right, I think this is, we're not going to be able to take this list as a whole bunch. I think we're going to have to take them one by one, because it seems like there's some consternation on it. So, may I have a motion to approve the, to amend the ed spec to the administrative recommendation on the reduction of the kindergarten classrooms and grade classrooms one through five? Mrs. Stein? And Mr. Ceni seconds, all in favor?
I'm sorry, so you're just, you're at, you're doing kindergarten?
I'm doing them one by one.
She's doing the first one kindergarten.
We can take the motions. We'll take, I'm going to take each one.
So, you have to make sure you're saying the music room and the, and the room and the DLC room?
Mm-hmm.
Because I have these as two separate ones. I can merge them at times.
Yeah, just merge them. Um, all in favor?
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Uh, Katie, and then John.
And that is unanimous.
Okay. Can I have a motion to reduce, uh, now, think, think about how I have to word this, everybody. Is there a motion to reduce the DLC rooms from four to two? Seeing no motion, the motion does not carry. That will be rejected.
Can I make a motion on the next one, to ask for nine classrooms?
Uh, nope, not yet. You can let me make it, and then you have to, you can make a motion to amend. Um, may I have a motion to reduce the quantity of ELP rooms from ten to eight, as recommended by the administration? Mr. Ceni, motions, is there a second? Mr. Brown, is there any discussion?
Can I motion to amend the request to nine classrooms? More accurately reflects a hundred and ten enrollment.
Is there a second on that motion? Mrs. Stein, seconds? All in favor of Miss...
How do you do the math for that?
Uh, one oh eight. Nine times twelve.
Nine times twelve.
So, you are then rejecting the administration's recommendation of running classes up to fifteen? Like, I'm just trying to say how we got the number.
Right.
Going back to the ed specs.
Or you're worried that enrollment will be higher than...
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Does it have a second? Mrs. Stein, seconds? All in favor? One, two, three, four, all opposed? One, two, three, four, fantastic. Uh, means you need to keep voting. And we'll take it a second time and see if we can, if you have a tie, you need to keep voting, I think.
What do you mean, you need to keep voting? How long, how long do we keep voting?
Someone do a quick Roberts rules, because Deb usually does it for me, and she's type, she's writing, and Burke's not here.
We need Krista.
I know, I think typically, when it's leadership, it has to keep, you have to vote again. So, if I understand, Mrs. McCammon, what you're doing is you're basing it nine times a maximum class size of twelve, which is a rejection of the administration's recommendation that you could run classes up to fifteen? Or you're allowing for more flexibility, I'm sorry.
Possible unexpected enrollment increases, too. So, I don't think our motion needs to incorporate all of that. And if the motion doesn't carry, then we go back to the original motion and we vote on that one.
Okay.
So, this motion did, this motion failed at this point, and now we go back to the original motion was to approve...
Approve the administration's recommendation. Okay.
To decrease that to eight.
Okay, all in favor?
Oh, whoa, I'm sorry.
All in favor of the administration, of motion to approve the administration's recommendation to reduce the quantity of ELPs from, classrooms from ten to eight? And that's going to be four, and opposed. And that's going to be four.
So?
Both fail.
Both fail.
I don't actually think they fail, but that's okay. We'll have to go back. Let's keep going. Reduce the size of the OTPT rooms for fifty students, or fifteen students, from fifteen hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. May I have a motion to support the administration's recommendation in favor? Mr. Maroni, a second? Mrs. McCammon, all in favor? That is unanimous. To eliminate the raised, may I have a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to eliminate the raised platform in the gym and provide risers and a ramp for, um, but we'd like it as an add alternate? Mr. Ceni, so moves, a second? Mr. Deneen, all in favor? That is Mr. Deneen and Mr. Ceni, all opposed. Motion does not carry. There's no change to that ed spec. Um, may I have a motion to, oh, sorry, Deb?
Sorry, it's...
No, it's a lot. It's like budget season. May I have a motion to eliminate the skyfold partition in the gym, as recommended by the administration? All in favor? Or, motion, Mr. Ceni? Mr. Brown, seconds? All in favor? And that carries unanimously. May I have a motion to eliminate the kiln and the kiln room? Mr. Brown, any second? Motion doesn't carry. Do you want to try one more time our ELP, or you just want to...
Go once more, Jill.
Jill, do you... Jill, do you wanna help provide a rationale for your motion?
Yes, I, I think the motion should read that the target enrollment is one hundred and ten and that the optimal class configuration is nine. Optimal number of classrooms is nine, not the optimal class configuration. Hundred and ten. And that the optimal number of classrooms to accommodate that is nine. Based on enrollment of twelve. Or whatever, I don't have the right words, based on.
All right, Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Brown.
Can I just comment? I just think that we should rely on our administration here and their expertise. And also, you know, we heard earlier that there is a possibility of going to other schools if need be. So if we wound up in a situation where we found that we were way under budgeted and a systemic problem, we need to recite or look at that. We do have an outlet there, it's certainly less than ideal, but I think that these are the numbers that administration is comfortable relying on. And if we do have a bigger problem down the road, it's going to be a bigger problem that will need to be addressed, a larger scale.
I, I, just to rebut that argument, if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it right. I do not wanna relive the mistakes of the past. The administration initially came to us with ten classrooms for DLC. My personal belief is, yes, it's number driven, but it's also flexible stra, space driven for me. And I really wanna make sure we have flexible space. And if DLC runs four classes and we have a hundred and eight kids, I don't wanna put another class in another elementary school, I just don't. We're building the state of the art building to accommodate a program. We want it in one place, that's the goal. That's my rationale and why I'm not.
And I agree with that goal, I think that's certainly what the administration is looking to get and I'm happy to rely on their expertise and their guidance to make this decision.
So I do think the administration came forward with two DLCs originally and ten ELPs. I understand the hundred and ten is the maximum that we've hit in the past. Where I'm struggling, because I always like to build more ELP, is that what I'm hearing from the administration is we have flexibility in the number of children we'll put and we're building a bigger room. If they were similar sized rooms? That, that's my struggle. I'd like to build all ten, but I, I, I think that we have a larger room and we haven't seen those numbers.
But that's why nine to me is a concession right down from ten, in my mind.
Is it more about the size? At the end of the day, we're building the same amount of rooms as the original ed spec, we're just changing the names on them. We're adding two DLC and taking away one ELP. Is it a matter of going back and saying, look, we wanna make sure that there's a maximum amount of flexibility in that ELP DLC kindergarten corridor to take use of all that space? So at the end of the day, we have the same number of classrooms.
Just the name.
That were in the proposal. We're just, we're changing names on them, maybe we just need to do the right things size wise, bathroom wise and stuff like that. So that we have maximum flexibility.
That's, yeah, that's fine, but what Shirley said earlier was there is a potential that DLC is growing. So what was originally thought to, I just don't wanna be in a position where people come back to us and say, we don't have enough classrooms. I do, I, I don't wanna be in that position. So if you're telling me that DLC may need more and ELP, you know, we originally said ten because that's what we were told we needed, I'm hesitant to do less. Nine to me is a concession, it meets in the middle, gives us one extra classroom. You know, one less, one more, depending what side you're on, and it's a good concession in my opinion.
Any thoughts, administration?
I'm not gonna argue against having more classrooms. And I'll sleep easier tonight too, so that's okay. I'm just trying to look at the charge that was before us and give a reasoned response back to it. But clearly if the board wants to, that's what local decisions make it all about, what we're comfortable in there and with, so.
All right, so is there a motion to be made? Because I got other business to do tonight. Anyone making a motion? Mrs. Stein, you look like you have a motion.
Well, what would my motion be to do nine again? Okay, I have a motion. May I make a motion?
Is there a second to Mrs. Stein's motion? Mrs. McCammon? All in favor, or, yes, I'm blanking it out. I can't sit here all night. That is unanimous. Thank you all. All right, we will move forward with a memo to the building committee, we'll do our best to get it out to them tomorrow. We have some work ahead of us tonight. All right, thank you. We will move on to the commencement of strategic planning with Dr. Richard Lemons, director of the Connecticut Center for School Change. Well, I can't say the word.
You're still awake, Dr. Lemons?
I had an introduction to the board.
And I will turn it over to Dr. Adley.
So good evening, everybody, and again, thank you for staying. Parents and community members appreciate that. Thank you for, Dr. Lemons. He drove up all the way from Virginia, is that my right, right? From Virginia to be here tonight? So I'm glad we gave him the quality time period. Ordinarily, we would not, we would not dovetail or join agenda items, I apologize to him because it was just a unique set of circumstances that came together since Thursday. But I'm delighted to introduce Dr. Lemons to us. Richard, as you know, has been a Harvard professor, he is teaching at Yale. I've worked with him for many, many years. He was my doctoral professor also, so he's responsible for many things, good or bad. But I have a tremendous amount of respect for Richard. He's also the executive director of the Connecticut Center for School Change that serves many, many school districts around the region, including the southern Fairfield County area. I think you'll be delighted with who he is, what he brings to the table and certainly given the time that he has been here, I just even don't wanna take any more of his precious time. Richard, Dr. Lemons, thank you for being here. The floor is sort of yours. I don't really, I don't know if you have anything to comment on floor space, but I'm drawing so. Welcome, Richard.
Wait till budget season.
As a budgetary teacher, as a former political science and history teacher, watching local government in action, actually I was getting a little bit chills. You might have been rolling your eyes at your job, but it seems like really that your local leaders are sitting here trying to sort her.
Now that the light's not on.
Oh, someone's coming. Oh, someone's coming.
I was just saying it's kind of fun to watch from the audience as a former history civics political science teacher that local government in action kind of bizarrely gives me goosebumps. But now I feel a bit like I'm in a congressional hearing. Sweats here. We are, I deeply appreciate you making time, especially this time of year when it is incredibly busy, to find some time for us because we're eager to get going with the strategic planning process. And we thought it was incredibly important to have this initial meeting, which is fundamentally about soliciting any input from you as a board as we begin to move forward, begin to engage a steering committee, begin to engage conversations around what the next five years should entail in terms of a strategic plan. And there are a number of moving parts, getting your feedback early on in that overall plan so that we can start moving forward immediately in the next calendar year and, and get the process going forward. I believe you have copies of the superintendent's strategic planning process. I think we also have a copy that can be put up on the screen. So basically for the whole of this conversation, we're gonna talk through this document and solicit any additional ideas, suggestions for how we begin to move forward and also answer any questions that you have about how will this work conceptually, but also mechanistically? How will it work at a practical level? So my read of this document, which I think is a very well put together overview of a strategic planning process, the superintendent and his team have put together, kind of if you look in these bold blue going down the left, you've got these conceptual buckets of work that need to get done and they're, they're laid out in a logical order. You have a description of what that work actually looks like. In the middle, it kind of gives you a sense of, of kind of small deliverables. And then to the far right of that document, you have a timeline. I acknowledge right now, we're already behind in terms of the timeline, but I don't think it's problematic. I think we can recapture much of that time. We, we were talking earlier today about building a calendar and we believe that we can deliver on the main charges that we thought we could deliver by April and June of next year, especially given that we're having this meeting tonight and we can solicit your input. So the overall deliverable here is to help you develop a strategic plan that lays out goals for the next five years, reclarifies vision, mission, core values, is aligned with the vision of the graduate, portrait of the graduate work that's happening at the high school, begins to lay out strategies and progress monitoring metrics. So it's, it's nothing more complex than that, but that is complex. There are a number of moving parts. And trying to help a community develop a strategic plan that is one that is useful, practical and is a working document, not one that gets created and put on the shelf for five years and not thought about again. So I think that's, that in, having worked with a number of districts on this, that is the biggest challenge. Is how do you create a powerful document that becomes part of the lifeblood? I know that the superintendent and his team are deeply interested in, in doing just that. So again, we, we're striving to deliver for you a, a strategic plan that has five-year goals, mission statement, vision statement, core values, articulates the strategies, articulates the measures of progress and also is aligned with the body of work that's happening at the high school around clarifying what graduates ought to look like in terms of skills, dispositions and competencies. Is there, so just on that, just on that, the very broad overview, are there questions, are there suggestions, are there worries in what the ultimate strategic plan ought to deliver on?
Mr. Sini.
I'm just interested learning about the steering committee and all inclusive and what that means. I participated in doing the talent plan. And it was conducted with a consultant, very supportive of bringing you on and giving us guidance. But we did it as a board and then we'd have these workshops and work groups, bring in the community. So help me understand what you mean by all inclusive steering committee.
So I, I have done a number of strategic plans in this state and across the United States and I can't remember one that I've been brought in, perhaps because if the board was doing it, they didn't need an outside facilitator. But I haven't done one where it was actually the board was the main driving force. I think it is much more commonplace now for the board to participate, but basically give the work over to the superintendent, superintendent's team and perhaps another collection of people who are more widely representative of various roles and functions within the community. And that typically means parents, educators from different parts of the organization, different levels, different roles. It typically means community members. It is increasingly meaning students in many communities. And there's nothing in science about the number twenty, but for some reason that seems to be a critical mass that we, that we are very comfortable with and we're seeing that across the state, that number. And I think the reason is if you get much larger than that, then the group at best really becomes kind of an advisory group. You're asking for their feedback, you're basically running a glorified focus group because you never can reach consensus. When you get really small, then you don't have varied viewpoints that help make the plan better in and of itself. So the, it's, it's not impossible for a board to say, let's do this within our committee structure. I think it's just becoming less and less popular to do so.
Yeah, just to follow up, is there an approval process then by the board to adopt?
Yeah, that was my question, I, just to dovetail on it. So given that the board is kind of charged with then approving and/or putting this plan in place, how does, how does that look? And if the board has an idea and the steering committee has an idea and they're in opposition, do you help facilitate that?
So I think, it's a great question. At the end of the day, it needs to be the board that does approve this. At least that's what we recommend. Because it should, you're, you are the governing body and you are also representing the community in, in providing oversight. So we strongly recommend that. And we, so we, we recommend that there is a process that includes some ongoing conversation with the board and the steering committee from beginning to end. And that happens in a variety of ways. The first, I'd recommend that one or two members of the board sit on the steering committee. That becomes an obvious direct mechanism for providing updates, progress checks to the board as a whole. I recommend that the superintendent and his team provide updates in upcoming board meetings where the process is going. I recommend that on occasion I come in and brief you on where things are. I also recommend that, that you're involved in the process so we're not putting you in the spot of coming in with a plan at the final hour that you've not seen and all of a sudden you're expected to either vote for it or not. So what I would suggest is we're asking the steering committee to roll up their hands and do a lot of heavy lifting to advise you, to give guidance to you, but at the end of the day, you're the decision-making body, not the steering.
So does it not in some ways matter what we're asking the steering committee to do? Like what, what questions are they answering for us?
Absolutely. So if you, if you, this document is very useful in that. Now you could advise, you could say, Richard, please tonight, can we make some adjustments to this? But if we follow this document that the superintendent created, it basically asks the steering committee to take on kind of two main functions. The first is to, to conduct a needs assessment, it's that third row that's going across, to look at all the evidence and information that the superintendent has collected in his entry phase, to look at existing data evidence about how the assets and the areas of improvement for the district. And to look at work that's going on in comparable districts and ask itself, so what are, what are the big priorities for us in the next five years in this next term? And so that's one big bucket of work that you're asking steering committee to do on your behalf. And then the other is to, once that is done, to work or maybe to advise you in the creation of those foundational artifacts that will become parts of the strategic plan, mission, vision, core values. That I wouldn't hand off to a steering committee to create, but you might want their guidance in that. We might even want a workshop at some time where we bring them in with you to do that. But that would follow upon what they find in the, in the needs assessment.
Mrs. McCammon.
So do you effectively have the steering committee create a roadmap with some milestones that indicate the checkpoints to the board so that the board can see in advance these are, you know, at X point in time, this is what I'll come to you with? So they, they can see what the steering committee is doing and also understand in advance what they'd be approving?
Somebody's make sure I understand what your question is. Are, are we gonna create a roadmap for the process?
Yes.
Yes. So we'll, we will map out, right now we just created a calendar that we're gonna begin doing the work with the steering committee. We still need to, to get members on the steering committee. At that point, we'll have a beginning session, which will be an orientation where we, we will be very explicit about what their charge is. Hopefully one or two of you will be there and you'll help provide the expression of that charge from the board. And we'll get started and that will include, here's exactly what we're asking you to do. And some of those pieces might be, we're just asking your advice. We're not even asking you to make a decision about this. And we'll be very clear to the steering committee how their information flows back to you so that you can ultimately make an informed decision on behalf of the community.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Can we just step back for a minute to the first stage, which is engage the board, which I guess is what we're doing right now?
Exactly.
So what we really need to do is fulfill the, the items that are here on, in this particular.
Yes.
First step. So do we do that tonight?
Yeah, so we're, so that is the entire purpose of, at least as I understand it. Is to try to build your comfort level with the overall plan. I was just starting with an overview and that then raised a question about the steering committee. But I'm hoping that as we go through this, you're really, you've given me enough guidance on outcomes, process, time. on outcomes, process, timeline, in relationship to this document. We've clarified roles and responsibilities and I think that includes the steering committee specifically, because I know that that sometimes raises questions. And if there are any other suggestions or revisions, that we walk away with those captured and so that we can follow your direction.
So, can you speak a little bit into what you'd like to see in terms of establish outcomes? I understand establishing the process and the timeline, but what types of outcomes would you like to establish?
So, what I'd, in some ways, I want you to react to what I read as the major outcomes of this. So, what I, what I believe your superintendent has put out as part of his entry plan in this document is to create a strategic plan that will include very clear elements, mission, vision, guiding values, his core values, which are kind of classic elements of a strategic planning document that create the foundation. It will include, it will address the vision of the graduate, portrait of the graduates being created at the high school, but that's kind of happening on a parallel track. Then it will identify goals for the next five years, improvement goals, as I understand it. It will include strategies for addressing those goals and measures of progress. How will you know if you're making progress towards those goals over the next five years? So, I guess what I'm asking the board to do is, does that capture what you have in your minds for a strategic plan? Are there missing elements that you want to make sure that we include within the strategic plan that aren't captured there?
So, I guess my concern, and it may need to be elevated a level, so feel free to push me up, guys, when I do this, is that, given our, the number of recent administrative changes we've had, and we're glad Dr. Adley's here and isn't going anywhere.
Where are you going with that discussion? Do we better, isn't it?
I think that there are kind of two sets of issues. Ones that have lingered and that the public has, and the board is hungry to fix, that may take a number of years. And then there's the kind of innovative piece to push the district forward. And I think they both, there's going to be a desire to capture both of these in the strategic plan and I don't want one to be sacrificed by the other. So, I, typically, I'd say strategic plans are, you know, how are you innovating going forward? But I think we have some significant work that now, under our fantastic leadership and with our constant and consistent administrative team that's been great, we need to solve. And they're not quick fixes. And then I think the innovation piece is also what the board has been hungry for and we've got the right people in the room to do it. So, those are kind of the two big buckets I see, that I imagine if you were to go out to the public, I could tell you the first three things that they're going to tell you and everyone here could probably identify the first three things they're going to tell you. So, those are kind of the two competing factors I see, or at least encompassing factors I see.
And I would just say that you're not alone in that. That's a pretty typical phenomenon in districts where there are hot-button issues that are part of the recent past of that community. And then there are desires to address those as well as to go big and beyond those and to really think about what can the school system provide for students and families in the community long-term. We're trying to create a space where both of those are addressed, that we're trying to think not just incrementally about what's the next step based upon where we were yesterday, though if there are significant issues that need to be addressed, we want to make sure those are somehow captured. But we want to think, you want to think five to 10 years down the playing field. You want to begin to imagine what's possible in the community.
Mr. Dini.
So, within that, maybe this is getting to the week, so is there components of this and does the steering committee break down that way and look at education, curriculum, operational-type issues, community-type issues, facilities-type issues, and different things like that?
That regularly happens. In the course of conducting the needs assessment, there tend to be major clusters of issues that emerge, both visionary ideas for what you want to accomplish as well as issues that people want to address. And we begin to get people working on those and thinking about the practical ideas.
So, when you look at a district like this, sometimes there's organizations that do strategic plans and they're like, "This is where we want to be five years," and they work back from that. So, do you look at, look, we're number one high school in Connecticut. We're in the top 100 in the country. So, what does that actually, you know, and then break that down and then how do we maintain that? How do we grow that? And how do we continue to differentiate ourselves from that?
Well, I would, so I'd welcome your advice on that. No, I have thoughts, but anyway, I'm the person who gets to drive in and drive away from the community, so I really do welcome your advice and I don't say that glibly. One of the, one of the most powerful conversations that the Connecticut Center for School Change has had the luxury of facilitating in communities across the state, and I personally had the luxury of facilitating across the United States, is what do you want for your children? And that conversation tends to cut across whether you're the number one high school or the last high school, because that's where values and hopes emerge in a community. And it becomes quite powerful and then when you start to think about, "Well, what do these ideas mean?" You ask people that question and there are a number of answers that people tend to come up with. And then you ask, "Well, what might that look like in a school system? What could we imagine doing there? And what are the, what were the areas we would have to work on in order to develop that?" And I think in some ways, that takes us back here. It gets us to the vision in addition to addressing any issues that you want to also do. And that has predictably been a powerful conversation and it's not as simple as just throwing that question out, but it tends to have been the heart and soul of most of these processes. And it tends to mobilize a whole lot of energy among the people who are participating.
Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with this. I think I'm not going to put words into her mouth, but I'm still on step one, but I'm also going down to different parts. And what I'm struggling with is your point of having a steering committee, but I feel like I'm abdicating my role as a Board of Education member because I feel it's my job to define goals, set strategic priorities, define the metrics, to come up with a mission. And we have up here, work with the board and steering committee to create those. So, I think I need to go back and understand, how do we clarify roles and responsibilities? Because I'm really confused as to where a steering committee begins, where the board ends, where the board begins, and whose role is whose. Sorry, I don't know if that's clear, but I'm a little lost.
Let me just add, though, the board would have to adopt every point that is brought forth by the steering committee.
But to follow up that thought, your possible outcomes is this could have the steering committee spend a lot of time, a lot of work, and come with absolutely nothing that the board adopts, which is probably unlikely. It's unlikely, but that's a possible outcome. Probably not the most probable, but...
So, as I understand it, and part of it was you just asking a big question, is we're really forming this, this steering committee to solicit some feedback and answers to big questions? What we're not doing, or asking the steering committee to do, is to say, should be running six sections of English and 12 sections of math. It's more, what do you want for your children? And then, maybe you could push it, coming back to the board and saying, "You're seeing a community that wants their children X, Y, and Z, you know, reduce levels of anxiety, strong test scores." I'm making up whatever the metrics are, but the community is informing the board on the metrics that they'd like to see or the big ideas they'd like to see. But then it's really the board's job to enact those things or to come up with the administration how to enact. Is that an appropriate decision?
I would say, yes. I would also say, and I would invite the superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, this plan isn't my plan. This needs to be your plan. So, if you say, "That actually doesn't work for us," then I say, "I serve at the pleasure of the Board of Education of Darien Public Schools," direct me how you want to do this.
So, the pitchforks come to us.
So, I'm being honest. I'm saying that I have run strategic planning processes in dozens of districts and it always looks a little bit differently based upon the local context of a community. What tends to be common is that the board is directly involved in the process. The administration of the organization is directly involved in the process. And there's some effort to engage people beyond those two groups so that the stakeholders in the community have an opportunity to express their views. Sometimes that is done in a much more advisory. We'll run focus groups in town halls and community meetings, solicit themes and patterns, come back to working groups here. And more often, it is moving towards a steering committee process where the board is saying, "Can you represent the broader community? Give us your viewpoints and try to come up with some guidance for us." Not even just give us the plan, give us your suggestions and we'll turn it into something that we...
So, I would say we're incredibly lucky to have a really informed, engaged community with our schools.
Absolutely.
And so, I think that we're in agreement that what we want to do is find a way to honor and access that, right? Because nine of us just can't know everything. We just want to make sure that when the decisions come back or the information comes back, that the board doesn't say, "Oh, well, I did it because they told me to." Like, that's not us exercising our responsibility. So, if you can help facilitate that with the steering committee as well, it would be foolish for the board not to, my one-of-nine opinion, it would be incredibly foolish for this board not to engage our community, given how active they are and given that the schools really are the center and the heart of this community in a lot of ways. So, I'd like to find a way, I think you're just, you might have to help the committee and us make sure that those roles and responsibilities are clear so that no one feels that they weren't valued and heard.
And hopefully, we can clarify that tonight, because I think it will, we're hoping to, at least we were hoping, to get a steering committee going relatively early in January. And if, and your guidance on what the function of that steering committee is critically important. So, I think that what is imagined here is that a steering committee that is given a charge to conduct a needs assessment and that that needs assessment comes back to the board in terms of priorities, in terms of areas that need improvement, in terms of some ideas about where it should go, and that that steering committee also includes one or two members of the board. That's what's imagined here. It's not that the steering committee is going off and working in a closed room and comes back to you five months later with a full-blown strategic plan. That, at least, that's not my understanding of what the plan was.
Okay. Mrs. Ritchie?
I just, sorry to keep harping on this, but step one, engaging the board, one of the items is clarify our roles and responsibilities. So, I just pulled up our roles and responsibilities, so I'm just, want to make sure, is that our starting off point? Is that where you're going to be?
That's what we're talking about. We are talking about that first row right now.
Okay.
That's all we're doing, is we're trying to figure out, what are we trying to pull off? What are the roles of, for you and for the steering committee? And if there's anything you want me revised?
But you're using our current roles and responsibilities as the starting off?
No, 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 no.
Starting from scratch?
No. I'm just, in terms of what are roles and responsibilities for strategic planning as are articulated here? But if that's, if that's a document that we need to call upon, you just need to help me, because I don't have access to that.
No, I think there's two different things going on. I think what we're looking for is roles and responsibilities within the strategic planning process on this document. So, I guess, I would say, part of what I would recommend to the board is that Dr. Lemons has done this before and done it through Connecticut, through many districts. If you can provide to us what you think works best, if there's anyone who has any concern on any detail of that, speak up, because I think we hired you because of your expertise. And if you think that it is that, like, I think we should honor that.
So, I kind of see us doing that. So, I think this is an effort in trying to get to the same place. I would suggest that the, so, not to speak out of both sides of my mouth, just to be really clear, I don't think there's one right path. There are probably a lot of bad paths. There are a lot of ways to do strategic planning wrong. There's not one right one.
Yeah, we don't want to be on those.
So, exactly. And I will protect you from that. And I will tell you if I think you're going in the wrong direction. I would suggest that you advise the superintendent and myself to create a steering committee that is advisory. It's not decision-making. It does have specific jobs that you're giving it, to conduct and feed back to the board areas, assets of the district, areas of improvement, important priorities, but not deciding on those advising, you know, here are our recommendations, bring that to the board.
Mr. Brown.
So, I'm sorry, I have to go back to something Dennis said and stay at the top on the word roles. And that is, you know, all of us here are elected officials, so our role is a little bit different in terms of risks and in terms of responsibilities, what happens with the decisions that are made through this process. The advisory board's not going to be elected. They don't have the same issues and the same considerations. So, when I had heard the 20 number presented, and I may have been the only one who thought this and incorrect in my presumption, but I had thought the first nine of that 20 were us sitting here. Ten may be Dr. Adley and maybe 11 say a Jamie Stevenson or Krista type in the community. So, I'm rather shocked to be sitting here today and hearing maybe it's one or two. I would have thought it would have been everyone here who had the time to commit to be a part of that.
So, if you were to say it should be the entire board, then I would say, it's the entire board. I would say it probably should be larger than 20 at that point.
Yeah, so I would say, I feel that if it gets too many people, you're having a fore every day. I think that, as I see this, this is the subcommittee of the board that we're inviting the community to be part of. And we have lots of subcommittees and we would hope people would report back, both the administration and whomever's on that committee. I actually have a question of, how is there an appropriate way to honor and respect? I don't know if you go to communities and it's hard to find 20, but I'll tell you, you'll have 50 names tomorrow, I will, of people who would like to be on this committee. So, do you have advice on how we would form this committee respectfully? And it gets, it touches on your point, Dave, having a wide enough breadth of people.
So, I think that if, once the decision is made about whether it is a subcommittee outside of the board or a subcommittee of the board, I think that's an important decision to make. And then, once that is made, there are a couple of different ways you can go. If you want to bring a dedicated, smallish number of people, I would identify target groups that you want to make sure are represented and invite people to put their name in and ultimately reserve right to say, "Well, I know you're interested, but we can't have 10 elementary school teachers when we only have 20 people." And pick among those. But there's another way to solve the problem of broader community, that's because you don't want to walk away from a whole bunch of people who want to give you input at this. And that we could build into this process within the needs assessment, because notice it says in the third bullet of the third major ray, I guess we would call that in my old math days, my geometry days, "Collect additional perspectives from constituents as needed." We could hold an evening of focus groups. We could run a community meeting with the entire community where we say, "Here are the big questions. We're really interested in your input and we're going to listen to you, take really good notes, identify the patterns and trends and feed that back in."
So, in that sense, it's a little bit of a hybrid of how we did the superintendent search. We did, in that case, we put out, we had focus groups, we also put out a wide survey, right? And then, and we were able to cull through that. And the steering committee could probably cull through that for big themes and ideas.
I mean, we'd brainstorming sessions when we do it on P and Z. It's great, all-inclusive.
Yep. And that gives us many voices, a chance to participate. Mrs. Ritchie.
And you're also, you would also like students on the committee? Is that what you said?
I think that is increasingly becoming the case because students are the, they're the ultimate client of this thing that we're trying to provide, which is a high-quality educational experience. And I think we've learned over the last several years, as the students actually have some really, really smart ideas about how their education should go and often will challenge default assumptions of adults about what's possible in schools.
Suzy, there were at least two on the library, Suzy? On the libraries, you imagine, there were two or three students, right?
We had, yes, two students, actually.
They provided a lot of perspective.
We had two students and, actually, three students, or in community conversations discussed.
On the 12th. Dr. Adley.
So, I think as a model, I'd probably recommend to the board, so here's groups of constituents. Let's say, CDSP are sitting here, so CDSP will be on it. I would probably go to the leadership there and Julie and go, "I need one or two people. You guys work it out and tell me who it is."
So, the board would identify the constituent groups and allow the constituent groups to send representatives. So... Um, so, I don't know how in the weeds we're getting tonight, but it seems like if you'd like this in January, that work needs to happen relatively quickly so that the message can get out. "Could you please send representatives to that?" Mrs. Nick, oh, is it here?
Oh, no, sorry.
So do you have a model that you've used? You know our town structure in terms of government, you know the size of our board, you know all the subcommittees and stuff like that. So is there a, out of that 20 people, is two people the right number from the board? This size board, is there three people the right number from the board? Like, is there people from the first selectman's office, aside from the parent teacher organizations? You've got teachers, you've got administrators. I mean, what, what's a best practice model look like? I feel we're talking a little bit in a circle here.
Yeah, I agree.
You're the expert. I, I would like to hear from you what kind of a best practice is to set this up.
So I would identify particular categories. There's no one right collection. I think that is, I think that's for you to decide. But I think it needs to include professional educators, it needs to include few members of the board, needs to include parents in some capacity, needs to, um, involve vested stakeholders of the community who feel like this public school system is one of their investments that they're making. And, uh, those can be different groups. I, I, I can't say that I know your city well enough to identify the right ones. I, I would actually say that that's right for central office to, to say, based upon the board's direction.
Do you have lists that you can circulate?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, who, who helps spark it? You know, who your, who your stakeholders have been in previous plans?
So why don't we do this? Why don't we ask Dr. Adley to put together a list, and then we can call it, and he can send that out to us, and if we feel that anyone's missing, any particular group is missing, you can send that in to me and Dr. Adley, um, and, and we'll work through that. But, rather than sitting here listing, "CDSP, you're on the list," so, you know, but we can all say, "CDSP." Um, that's our parent organization and our umbrella for the PTOs, certainly educators. But why don't you put together that list, send it around, everyone have a read-through. If you think anyone is missing from that list, send it in for consideration and we'll work. Mrs. Ritchie?
So just to be clear, we're, we're going to get this list of different groups, and then those groups will send to us their volunteers and-
Yes.
Once, once we get the list of the groups, then you would circulate, agree by the board, then you would send it out.
So let's, simple math, let's say we identify 10, 10 different constituent groups, we ask them all to send two representatives, and, and you have a steering committee.
And then, any board member?
I think the, the board will probably have assigned representatives to it. Um, but I think the, anyone, any board member certainly could attend a meeting. But we probably, I would argue, a little differently, Mr. Brown, than you, that if all nine of us show up to every meeting, it's a little overwhelming to constituent groups. But, I don't think you'd be precluded from attending. But, but sometimes it's hard, believe it or not, for, for parents to speak in front of a board, so.
Can, can I check that as assumption? Because sometimes with steering committees, you do close the doors and sometimes you open them. So just would be curious what you have historically done, if I could just check that.
We've done it both ways. We've had them as open meetings where people could come in and sit, and we just were really clear about the protocols of listening in with, without becoming part of the work in the room. The majority of the time, it has been open door, but in a way that no one ever came.
Yeah.
The, people knew it was happening, people knew that these different stakeholder groups were representing them in some capacity. So, we, we would advertise, let people know that these meetings were happening and they wouldn't. That might not be the case here.
So part of the work here would be, I think, that like, we need the steering committee to work, and so nine board members is a public meeting of the Board of Education, which is, or a meeting held in public of the Board of Education, which is very different. So, um, I think we'd look to have representation and hopefully who members on the board reporting back regularly with the administrations that the board has kept abreast.
Mr. Brown?
Um, if, Dr. Adley, how are we going to communicate the list and who we want and don't want? How are we going to do that procedurally? Does it have to be public or warned, or are we going to vote on that? We have to have a vote later?
Mr., Dr. Adley will email us around the list. If there's feedback, we won't, we will not have meetings over email, so if there's significant feedback, let me know. We can discuss it at the next public meeting if we need, but there's not time to call another meeting between now and January. So, no discussions over email as a reminder. Um, review a list, just like we do review agendas and stuff like that. If anyone has any comments, send it in to Dr. Adley.
So today, we, uh, we set a fairly aggressive calendar of meetings, uh, which are basically starting on Monday the 13th at 5:30 PM, January 13th, and they're going at a pretty, uh, quick clip. So basically, there'll be Monday nights and, and Tuesday mornings. So, you'll have, uh, the constituents will have the dates, so there's not much point volunteering if you can't make the dates, right? So similarly to the board if that's the case, so, uh, but we have the calendar and, uh, we'll submit that to the board also.
Why Monday nights and Tuesday mornings?
Uh, in all honesty? Dr. Lem, Dr. Dr. Lemmons' schedule and the cabinet's schedule to some degree are certainly my schedule.
Is that weekly?
It's, uh, every, nearly every other week to just get it up and running. There, I, I think you just, you would recognize it with all the means.
Just for clarification, you're, the steering committee begins their work January 13th?
Yes. That's what we're proposing.
Can you speak a little bit to how you facilitate the meeting such that it's not, like, a personal I-want list?
So, the, um, so here's just my, my facilitator's trick. It's not really a trick, but it's a philosophy that I have. The most work happens actually between the meetings to set the committee up to be effective, which means a meeting is generally used as a way of soliciting ideas, allowing people to kick tires on an idea, or maybe even make a forced choice between three, two or three options. Then I take the work offline, clean it up, bring it back to the committee. I rarely put a steering committee in the position of trying to reach consensus in a meeting. It's much easier to create a process where everybody gets heard, and we get everybody's idea on the table, but I can clearly see, "Well, that was a random idea," versus that idea was echoed 23 times in the course of 23 minutes.
Lucky you, Dr. Lemmons.
And then I come back and say, "Here, here's what I heard, here are the patterns and trends, now here's the next series of questions for us to address."
Okay.
Uh, because I, I've just, I've been in that spot where you're trying, you're trying to reach too early of a consensus, and because people feel closed out, they dig in, and this allows people to not worry about dealing, digging in, but it allows everyone to feel as if their voice is getting captured. And what is quite, what I, what has generated quite a bit of goodwill in doing this over the ti- over a number of years, is when you come back and you can say, "Well, this is what I heard," and people can legitimately see what they heard and what you bring back to them, all of a sudden, they're like, "Okay, this is an honest, fair process." My, my view might not be taking the day, but I know someone heard my view, it was documented, and now we're moving, moving on.
And what's the timeline a, at this point for the, the steering committee to come back to the board? And the reason I ask is you, as I look at this and as we begin to develop a budget for next year, or the, the following year now, I imagine the strategic plan would help inform that, so the, the strategic, I mean, the steering committee would need to be back, I think, beginning of spring in front of the board.
Well, could you talk to that even more, at a more detailed level? I would think you have some pretty prescribed checkpoints that might begin even before the spring. Um, are, are there five of them that you can pull up and speak to?
So, two, I, two different questions. I hear what you're asking. What I'm asking is, I'm actually looking for the end date of the steering committee, and you're looking for the checkpoints to inform the board along the way. I just want to know, as Dr. Adley and the board would need to develop plans and goals and objectives in the summer, kind of the end date, and then we can back up and say if there's checkpoints to come back to the board.
So, uh, respectfully, by when, in an ideal world, when would you have that coming back to you? So that it can inform budget and not be in conflict with the budget-making process?
So I would say the board, um, approves its goals and objectives going forward in July, and, um, I would hope the strategic, strategic plan could help inform that. Um, Dr. Adley, you could speak to when you need information for when your thinking cap is on for the following budget year. I know it's already on.
It's on right now.
Yeah. But, but that, that's what I'm saying, what I don't want to start to do is make decisions in a vacuum, that then in some ways either conflict or short-circuit parts of the strategic plan, but there is the fundamental, like, I, we need to have a plan for kids with doors open in schools.
So if, if we use this timeline as a jumping-off point, the steering committee's needs assessment and all of those various activities were to have been completed by the end of January, but that assumed launching a month to a month and a half earlier. The, uh, and then the superintendent, the board and the steering committee creating vision, mission, value statements was to be done by the end of March. I think we could come close to that by the end of March if we're able to get the steering committee up and running immediately in January, but if we had an additional month to make up for the time lost in getting started, that would be ideal. Does that still afford you?
Yeah, March, April still affords us time to, to get the administration and everyone together for goals and objectives.
There's, there's still, will be work that will need to be done. If you, if you, so the, the flow of this, as I understand it, goes from, from tonight to get the steering committee up and going, get the steering committee engaged in a needs assessment, get the needs assessment to inform the development of vision and mission core values, and then ha- and go, and goals. And then having those in some ways directing the professional educators to say, "Okay, how would we, like, what strategies should we employ to achieve these goals based upon what we've been doing for the last five years and best practice?" The, uh, that part, that last part might not be entirely completed, but I imagine that conversation has begun by the, by the time you're starting to have conversations about the budget.
Great. Mrs. Ritchie?
Just, just a, more of a meeting structure question. Do you run the meetings? Are you basically the chair of the steering committee? And do you send out an agenda to the committee and set the agenda?
So, if, if, if it is, ideally, I would say yes. I would say that I am, you, you kind of give me the authority to set agendas with the superintendent and facilitate and moderate those meetings. Really operate, moderating and facilitating them more than serving as a chair. I'm kind of representative of the superintendent and, you know, by extension, the board. I don't have any vested authority in the community other than being the recipient of a contract, but I think-
So, I imagine, and correct me if I'm wrong, but given that the board has ultimate authority, that the steering committee is really a, a level playing field, right? All the inputs are level because ultimately, the board is approving.
Yes.
Okay.
In an ideal, that's what I would recommend. You're, you're creating a space where smart people can work hard together to try to clarify what's most important for the next five years, and that, that it comes back to the board, and the board says, "Okay, here's what we're going to do with this."
And then, can you go to Jill's question about the, kind of, milestones? How you, how you envision that?
So, I don't, I, I don't have a very specific answer to you. We can create one. We can identify, we can, so we just now built the calendar, what, three or four hours ago, and we could take that calendar, line it up with the activities of that third row, and give you a schedule of report buys. That, and, and line those up even with board meetings.
With board meetings, right? Could we just schedule it out onto our board?
Yeah, I was going to say, it might be wise to do some, we meet twice a month, to do something like the second board meeting, and every month, we will have some sort of report out on the steering committee's activities, rather than in the middle of budget season trying to get all nine of us together, because I know we'll be really interested together again.
And that makes it more authentic. You're lining it up based upon your board meeting schedule.
So do you use, in, in one of the early meetings or steering committees, do you use our goals and objectives that we've drafted, that we're working on, as a talking document for people to say, "Good, bad, been on there for five years, we've done nothing with it"? You know, that whole conversation and then at what-
There's nothing that's been on there for five years and done nothing with.
And then, I could mention, so I could mention things, um, that people would agree with. Um, and then, do you incorporate into that Dr. Adley's 90-day entry plan as to what his feedback is of his first 90 days? And is that something that goes to the steering committee, comes to us as a board to discuss before it goes to the steering committee?
Uh, well, the entry, the entry plan by design comes to the board first.
And, and I recommended, after seeing this, that that is a critical piece of information. There's been quite a bit of concerted effort to gather input of stakeholders, and we shouldn't pretend that he hasn't been having these conversations and looking at what's happening in the system as part of the entry plan. So that becomes an important piece of information. After it's reported back to the board, it gets utilized by the steering committee.
So what might be important to do is, um, and maybe we can do that in this in a smaller group, is kind of define terms, right? We have roles and responsibilities up here, but what Deb's talking about is board roles and responsibilities, which I would say is important to clarify to the steering committee because there's often misinterpretation of what we do and what we don't do. Our goals and objectives are annual, so, um, that'll be important for people to look at. These are annual goals, and what we're looking is, is a five-year plan, and we've been hungry for it, right? Five, maybe seven if we can push it a little bit. Um, but I, I, so I think maybe as we're all talking or, and as, or before you sit down, maybe we can meet and define kind of our colloquial terms for things, um, to help facilitate those meetings.
I think that'd be incredibly useful.
Okay.
It would clean up noise.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dr. Lemmons?
When are we going to pick whose?
So I think we'll do it like committees. I have one member who's already expressed interest, but anyone else who's interested, send it in to me, and, um, I think probably what I'm hearing, although I'm open to it, is two members to report back so that we, you know, if there's problems with scheduling, two different, well, I mean, just two, anyone who's interested, send me an email, and I'm happy to make assignments from there.
I should probably get you the dates sent so that you can know what they are.
Well, how about you do that in your email where you identify groups? We'll like, try to efficiently do emails and efficiently do-
Right, so that way people see the dates going out into the future, and they know that those will be difficult and may have conflicts, they probably shouldn't step up to volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I think we're really excited. I think we have, I know we have been asking for something like this, um, for a while, so we're happy to, Dr. Adley, for finding you. Um, we will stumble a little bit in the dark, so feel, feel free to turn the lights on for us. Um, but I really do think that it will benefit the district, the town, and really all of our processes that we're looking to do.
Dr. Adley, have you done one of these before?
Strategic planning? Yes.
Do you have any, from your previous district?
Yes.
Something we could pull off the web or just take a look at it?
For better or worse, yes.
Okay. You're not proud of your-
Oh, I am proud of the work. Oh, I'm, I'm very proud of the work, actually, yes, but I'm going to be proud of the work that we do here. But yes.
I'd be interested to see. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Lemmons now that we made him wait quite so long? Stages are really important to us now.
That, that's important? Like, I, again, I say, I, I said, not with, not with much hyperbole, there's a little bit of, you know, goosebumps.
Yeah.